I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. Let's call Prattville Planning Commission to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Gillespie, Councilman Bowles, Vice Chair- Chairman Gardner, Vice Chair McCauley, Chief Johnson, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Hall, Mr. Nelson, and Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. As I look at our agenda, we have no minutes for this month. We have some old business and we have a public hearing. And that's our preliminary plat- home place residential part located at the intersection of Highway 82 bypass McQueen Smith Road South. The owner is DHS Holden Ford Incorporated and William Howard Maffrey Irrevocable Trust and McQueen Partners. The representative is the chairman. And let it be known that this is a public hearing from the beginning? No, it was held over, I'm sorry, it had been read in. It's not a public hearing. Mr. Duke?
Yes, Mr. Gardner, this, the public hearing on this item was held November the 17th and was held several times since that, since that meeting to allow the petitioner to complete some, some drawings for this preliminary plat. Those items have been submitted to the planning department and distributed to various departments for review and comment letters have gone back and forth with the applicant. You have copies of those in your, your file there. I apologize, we didn't have those completely ready to go out with your packet over the weekend and you can take a look at those. And you can see that we're, we're making good progress on that. They've satisfied most of our requirements. We're down to a few items dealing with showing easements and details on some handicap ramps for, for sidewalks, but it looks like we're very close on that. Mr. Chalmers was here. If you wish to ask him any questions. I, I do have one request from our perspective. If you will notice, the, the plat has actually been a little more refined and it's being called Home Place South Plat Number One. The resolution read on the 17th said Home Place Residential PUD. So if someone could make a motion at the appropriate time to, to substitute that new name for any place where it was read in as Home Place Residential PUD, that would be appreciated.
Home Place South?
Yes.
Do I have a motion from one or the commissioners? All right, Chief?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carry.
Okay, so basically you have that amended motion before you, so I suppose that was what the, the motion was to amend it.
That's correct. Amended motion.
So I'll be glad to answer any questions at this point. And like I said, Mr. Chalmers is here if, if you have any questions for him as well.
Does anyone on the commission have any question for Mr. Duke at this time? If not, Mr. Chairman, please come up.
Thank you. Hopefully we can clear y'all's agenda of this item and apologize, it's kind of dirtied it up for a little while, but trying to get the, everything in our ducks in a row for the development of these apartments. And anyway, I think we're here, we've got everything submitted and obviously we have some comments and I think most of those are taken care of, other than a couple of minor items that are in process. But we have no objections to what the comments have been, so we would request that y'all would approve it. If there are any questions, answer.
Yes, Chief?
I apologize for not remembering the gentleman's name. I spoke with him about the water being brought in off the 82 side and-
Mr. Harville?
Yes. If, I believe it'd probably be appropriate if we explained how we worked that issue out, just for record.
I'm Robert Harville with Lancaster Associates. We prepared the plans for the road improvements. What we discussed on the phone, you expressed a concern that there was no water line shown on Old Quarters Road. Reason being is that there's not a water service available on Highway 82 in order to bring water up that road. In order to address your concerns for the present day and the future, what we discussed was when we submit plans for the future apartment project, we would extend a private water hydrant at the entrance to the apartment development, which would be just outside the right-of-way. As a part of the plans that are before you today for Flit Williams, we're extending a public water main down Flit Williams, providing a T at a future intersection. That street name, future intersection is Twin Silos. Twin Silos is planned to extend over to Old Quarters Road. When Old Quarters Road, excuse me, when Twin Silos Road is constructed in the future, as a part of that construction, there will be a public water main which will be brought from Flit Williams over to Old Quarters Road, at which point the hydrants would be set at the intersection per the city standard. So we can't do it today because there's no water service available on Highway 82 in order to, to enact that. However, there are provisions that your concern can be addressed ultimately. At the end of the day, when this project is built out, the plan is that there will be a looped water system and all the public streets will have water mains that are interconnected and looped.
Does anyone else have any questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does any commission have any discussion among ourselves? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the Home Place South Residential Resolution, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Let it be known that motion passed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It was already read in. Under new business, we have a final plat of Glenbrook Subdivision Plat Number 2A located off Glenbrook Boulevard. Owner is Stone Martin Builders. Engineer representative is Barrick Simpson Incorporated. Mr. Smith, if you will, would you please read that resolution in?
Final plat Glenbrook Subdivision Plat 2A, May 17, 2012. Whereas Stone Martin Builders is a developer of Glenbrook Subdivision Plat 2A and whereas the proposed, thank you, the proposed development is located off Old Ridge Road on the north side of River Chase North subdivision, south of Pendlebrook subdivision, west of Glenbrook subdivision Phase One, and whereas the proposed development is located outside the city limits, the sketch plan was approved on November 1, 2017 with contingencies. The preliminary plat was approved on May, on March 15, 2012, and whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed final plat. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted final plat of Glenbrook Subdivision Plat 2A.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Duke, if you will, give us your report.
Yes, sir. The requested final plat for Glenbrook, Plat 2A, contains 26 lots. This is, as you recall, from the preliminary plat, an extension of Glenbrook Boulevard to the west, basically on the west side of the drainage ditch that separates these two portions of the subdivision. This final plat has been reviewed to determine whether it is at substantial completion. As you recall, your regulations require a certain number of improvements to be completed before it's actually presented to you for review unless the applicant requests that they be allowed to petition for approval contingent upon a bond being placed for those incomplete improvements. This, this project does, does not meet substantial completion at this point and they have requested that, that you hear it and they be allowed to, to post a bond for the incomplete improvements. Mr. Rice, the engineer for the job, is here. He certainly can speak to that better than I can, but I'll be glad to answer any questions at this point.
Ms. Carpenter?
What percentage completion would you say?
Mr. Rice can give you a, a better idea of that. Earlier in the week and certainly last week, the cutoff time for that inspection to be added to your agenda was last week. At that point, they were still working the, the base and they had not put down curb and gutter. And I'm not sure if they've gotten to that point, if this week that they were set for that. I'm not sure what impact the rain over the past weekend had on their, their plans, but Mr. Rice can answer that. But they, they're not to the point where there's asphalt on the, on the street, at least when I was there earlier this week.
Mr. McCauley, you had a question? Anyone else? All right, Mr. Rice?
Good afternoon. I think we're all fairly familiar with this one since we've seen it a few times and coming back and I really appreciate everybody working with us on this. There was a slight modification from the approved layout. We removed four lots from this area, which I'm sure will not hurt Chief Johnson's feelings whatsoever. We, this would be, the second phase of this is scheduled to come right through here and connect all the way back in. And those four lots will now be incorporated into that second phase instead of this first phase, mainly because of timelines on the, on the subdivision being complete. We, we are able to go forward a lot faster without trying to get those final four lots in. I know Mr. Duke did speak to substantial completion. 100% of the curb and gutter is in. All of the storm, storm inlet throats have been poured and it will be paved tomorrow. Tomorrow, they are paving these roads. The base is completely in and it is ready to go. The right-of-way has been graded, pulled back. It's ready to pave. So they are, they are planning on paving tomorrow. Now, what I did do was included a bond. And I'm, I don't know if that's in front of the commission in your packets, but the bond does include both, both sections of asphalt. Usually the bonds that are, that are put before, put on a subdivision to the city are only for the final one inch of the wearing surface. We did include the, the initial layer of asphalt in the bond, but this, I would ask this commission to approve this subject to submission of the bond. And essentially what we would do would be, come Monday or Tuesday, when the asphalt is in, we would reduce this bond by the amount of the, the initial layer of asphalt and then submit the final binds to, to staff for approval. So what we would, what we would ask to do is to approve it subject to a staff approval of the bond. We would not trying, we would not be trying to record this plat prior to asphalt being down.
With the asphalt being placed tomorrow, what percentage would you say would be complete? Would that be the 90% normally that we-
Above 90%. The only thing we had left would be some inlet tops. Right after they, they lay the asphalt, they pour the top layer of the storm sewer inlets, be the inlet tops and some final erosion control cleanup.
So you're saying all your utilities are in there with the exception of the-
Oh, yes, 100% of the storm, water, and sanitary is in.
Okay. Any questions of anyone else of the commission?
Can I make a motion that this be approved contingent upon the bond being submitted?
Yes. Yes, do I hear a second? Second by Chief. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Let it know that it was amended by Ms. Carpenter. That was the amendment. Now we'll vote on the resolution for the final plat of Glenbrook Subdivision Plat Number 2A. All in favor of this resolution, please let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. Rice, and at your earliest convenience, get with Mr. Duke, the planning department, and get all that paperwork worked out for him.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. The next business of the day is a replat of Prattmont Church of Christ Plat Number One located at 901 North Memorial Drive. Owner is Prattmont Church of Christ. Engineers Larry speaks and associate. Mr. Duke?
Yes, sir. You have a request for a simple replat of lots 95 and 96 of the Avalon Place subdivision. If you, if you've been on the commission very long, you know that there was a very large subdivision platted basically between Ridgewood Road and the northern part of Camilla Estates way back in the 1950s. And these two lots that are occupied now by the Prattmont Church of Christ, they're off of North Memorial Drive, or they're asking to replat those two lots. They recently added on to the, to the church building and made some improvements to the parking lot. This is just a housekeeping matter to, to pull these two lots together into one and also clear up a discrepancy between the, the state right-of-way line and their property line. For some reason, they, they've been living as if they had, had given the state about 25 feet of extra right-of-way. So this plat will clear that up. The state doesn't have any claim to that property and frankly, the church needs it for their site. So any questions about this? I'm not sure if anybody's here from speaks and associates to, to speak on this matter, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone from the commission have any questions for Mr. Duke at this time? Mr. Duke, let's just take a simple motion, I suppose.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Mr. Smith?
I'd like to make the motion to accept that as is, however you want to say.
The replat of those lot number 95 and 96?
Yes.
All right, do I hear a second? Second by Chief Johnson. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Motion carry. We have another replat, item number four, River Chase North Plat Number 4D located at 1513 Priler Road. Owner is S&amp;T Contractors. Larry speaks and associates. Mr. Duke, your turn again.
Yes, sir. We have a second replat, which is lots 32 and 33 of River Chase North Plat Number 4C. It's basically platted in, in 2006. The owners, you have a common ownership of these two lots. The second lot is needed to expand the, the yard available to the, to the house that was just recently constructed on, on one of these lots. And they're, I believe, adding a pool to it, but this is a simple motion, a required simple motion to join these two lots together.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Duke, of this replat? Yes? If not, Mr. Hall, would you introduce a simple, simple motion for me? This is item number four.
There's not one.
There won't be one in it. You book?
Well, I'm moved. Make them look to do this.
All right, Mr. Hall made a motion that we do a replat on River Chase North Plat Number 4D. Do I hear a second?
I'd like a second.
You've got a lot of seconds. Thank you. Second, Mr. Smith. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Madam Secretary, motion carries. We at the, we at the end of our agenda for that, but we do have a little, a little bit on our miscellaneous and we have a guest speaker in the house, in the chambers today. Ms. Ophi? Ms. Harden? Would you please come up and introduce yourself and tell us about what you-
It is either Ophi or Ms. Harden.
Ms. Harden, that's fine.
My name is Ophi Harden. I live at 514 Weatherby Trail here in Prattville and I'm pretty new to Prattville. So when I came here from California, it was quite an adjustment and I have to tell you that you have a beautiful community here. When I arrived, it was like looking at gardens, creeks, flowers, and very, very friendly people. So as the commissioners that are in charge of the development of our city and the growth, the planned growth, and certainly the quality of life increase, I thought it was important that you, you listen to what the Otaga Creek Improvement Committee is doing. You may have already heard, and I hope I'm not boring anyone, but Otaga Creek here is a wonderful natural resource and it's not only Otaga Creek here in Prattville, but if you look at the whole map of Alabama, you can see that there are rivers and waterways everywhere. And as the economy gets worse and worse, people are looking for vacations that are low cost, that are family-friendly, that are family bonding, that provide an opportunity for not only recreation, but also exercise, getting out in the outdoors, not being in front of the computer games and stuff. And so when Mayor Gillespie called a committee together last July to do this, I jumped on board because I could see that this is something that is going to benefit all of Prattville. As being the overseers of how this, this city grows and develops, I know you're also concerned with economic development, you're concerned with tourism, you're concerned with all those things that bring people here to Prattville to appreciate everything that we have here. Well, what we've done is we have cleared Otaga Creek for eight miles. Four miles south of the dam down to where the wastewater treatment plant is and four miles above the dam, which is up to County Road 10. So that you can actually paddle all the way and have to carry your canoe or kayak, just the little ways to get over the dam, but we're working on that too, so that you should be able to just slide in easily eventually. So having cleared all of this space, what we need to do now is to let the rest of this Alabama community and maybe all of the United States know what is going on here in Alabama. It's great to have a natural resource like this, a treasure, but if you keep it just to yourselves, it's like, you know, we're not going to grow very much. So we are doing all kinds of things to promote Alabama, to promote the Otaga Creek, to promote waterways. We would like to see Alabama become the paddle sports state and, and there's no reason that it can't be. It has everything necessary to make it so. Sarah Byard from the Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission coined a phrase, which is that Alabama can become the Colorado of the New South. And I think that is so true. It can become that. And so we're working to do that. But not only are we working with the waterway, we're also working with a walk trail. We have, through the city, the city has been, Mayor Gillespie and the city have been very, very supportive and encouraging of all of our efforts. There have been, as you have seen, some improvements made behind City Hall where the ramps were put in, railings were put in, the bank was cleared, so we can have a clear walk all the way to the American Legion. We have applied for grants to help us do this. We have a grant hopefully coming in soon for a walk, Crimson Stone Walk Trail from Washington Street to the American Legion Building. And that will be crimson stone and someday it will be lighted and you'll be able to go out there in the evenings and take a leisurely stroll under trees and, and it'll be wonderful. And people, I believe, will come to see that. We also have plans to develop along the creek, especially in light of all the new development that will be happening here, the new residents that will be coming in. They will need new things to look at, new things to do, and we need something unique here in Prattville. We already have it through the creek, your natural resource. We have it through the Artesian Wells, which I personally believe is one of those gold mines that we've all been sitting on and have not done anything about really promoting it, although someone tried at one time when they called it the Fountain City with over 400 Artesian Wells. That is one of the big, big things that I think is going to happen in the very near future. Water is important. They're fighting for it everywhere. In California, it's getting dirty politics to get water rights and here you have it just coming out of the, out of the ground and flowing into the creek and flowing everywhere. And that's another unique thing about Otaga Creek. It never dries out. It always has a water source. It has the Artesian Wells. It has 125 acre feet of water that, that pour right into it. So that's just some of the things that we are doing. I know when I first came to Prattville, I went to the planning department and met Mr. Duke because that's what you do when you want to learn about a community. You want to see what's been planned, what's in the future, how, how you can fit into it. And he loaned me a hard copy of the comprehensive plan. And as you're well aware, Prattville is deficient in parkland for our residents. So this is going to be a tremendous help in that we will have a long park, which is the trail. We will have other parks that will be added. We're thinking about a historic museum, an interactive science center for kids. We have a lot of aquatic life out there. We have a lot of flora out there that people need to learn about. I've learned about a lot of it too, that needs to be cut down, which I cringe every time one of those trees come down. Not trees, but bushes, I guess they are. But I guess a lot of them are very invasive and need to, to come down. But in any case, I just wanted to make you aware of what's going on with the Otaga Creek Improvement Committee. We are here to help Prattville. We're here to promote good, healthy recreation and we are here to help the city in any way that we can. We have thousands of hours already invested in this, in equipment and, and lots and lots of effort, all for only helping our future generations. I have grandchildren that will come here and visit with me and I want them to get into the creek. I want them to enjoy it. I want it to be healthy. I want it to be out in the sunshine instead of inside the house. I did bring some brochures, which I will give to you. And my last thing is that tomorrow we have a special guest float down the creek. It starts at 1:00. We'll be meeting at the Chamber of Commerce and you are each invited to come as my special guests. You don't have to bring anything other than yourselves. We will provide the floats for you, whether it be a kayak or canoe, your choice even. So I have put my telephone number and my name on the back, so if you are interested at all, would love to have you join us. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Now's the time. You have any questions, Ms. Harden?
I only have a question that I would like to make your comment.
All right, Mayor?
I will be seeing you tomorrow because I will be participating in that, but I do want to say thank you and a lot of the work that you guys have done. Some of it has been right behind the Darster Well, the Artesian Well, right up above the, the football stadium. But as I rode by there today, I saw at least six cars there with kids enjoying the water that, right there in that little favorite watering hole it looks like. But the, the opening up of that area that you guys have done and also the impact that the H, not H, help me out, Mr. Joel, HPR-A, they helped out with the donation to help beautify the well there. And so that little portion there has really been a blessing to a lot of people because mentioned earlier, I saw several youngsters down there in the water, but I also saw several senior citizens filling up their water jugs. So, you know, you, between a collaboration of, of all, it has really been a, a big benefit there. But thank you.
Thank you. And I should add that we have marked the creek every mile, starting from the Alabama River up to the dam, six miles, so that in case of emergency services being needed, you know, people will know they've gone past marker two or three or whatever. So that should be a help and make it even safer, although it is a wonderful, family-friendly, safe environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. That's very nice. I noticed y'all doing a lot of painting and what have you around the creek.
We have some signs at the new trail park. Great big sign.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Any more questions of anyone of the, of the commission? If not, meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.